Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We are really looking forward to this evening's meeting. It's my pleasure to make a motion to return to public session. If I could have a second, please. Thank you, Catherine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Wonderful. And would everybody please join us, as is our custom, in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
..........................................................................................
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Is the microphone on? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time. You can't hear?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very clear back there.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much for confirming. It's hard to tell. So it's Thursday, April 7th. We are really looking forward to a couple of great presentations this evening. We're delighted to welcome our curriculum leaders for social studies. Thank you so much for being here. And we're also going to have an opportunity to be updated on the work of our facilities committee, which we're looking forward to. And I think perhaps would you like to do board announcements and then pull an item from the consent agenda? Okay, let's do that. So before we turn our attention to all of the above, let's postpone board subcommittee reports to the end of the meeting, if that's okay? And let's just pause for some board announcements, if we have any tonight. Please, Bill.
My wife and I saw the musical Wedding Singer.
Yes.
And as always, it was wonderful. And not wonderful for a high school production, but just wonderful, period. It's just amazing how not only the talent, but they always seem to pick the right musical for this year's group. You know, there was a group that, you know, did Rent. There's a group that did this. It always seems to be a perfect fit. And the other thing that strikes me is I'm sort of proud to live in a community and have a school where they can have a play that has, you know, some touchy subjects and it's just, it's fine, you know? No one's offended and it's just, and they all embrace it. It's just, it was very uplifting. It was very good.
So well said, and thank you so much. Yes, congratulations to all of our students.
Yeah.
And thank you so much to Amy Geiger and to Mrs. Urban, now with a new name, I'm sorry.
Adamo.
Thank you, Mrs. Adamo. And all of the teachers and staff and community members who supported the kids in that production. It was extraordinary.
And when they do the thank you, we usually go to the last performance. And they do the thank yous. I mean, every teacher must aim to have that type of influence and to get that type of praise and just admiration from their students. It just was remarkable.
Thank you, Bill. Wonderful. Yes, Liz?
I had the opportunity to go to the grand opening for the John Jay 5K Trail.
Yes.
Which was a lot of fun on Saturday. And I ran in the race on Sunday. And I finished it, so I consider that winning. And it was a lot of fun. There were a lot of people, great energy, lots of students, lots of kids. I think our student Max, whose last name escapes me right now.
Goodman, yes.
Ran like sub five or six-minute miles. It was kind of amazing.
Yeah.
And just a really nice event all around.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Seeing a lot of nodding. And yes, that trail has been a long time in coming. I think since 2015.
Yeah.
Many, many volunteer hours and generous donations from community members and businesses in the local area. And it is wonderful to be able to officially celebrate the grand opening, which of course, like so many things, was postponed because of the pandemic. And thank you for running and participating, and congratulations on your race. And thank you for mentioning that. Julia?
I just wanted to echo that sentiment and to remind Liz that in every race, there's a volunteer world called the sweeper. And that's what I volunteer for. You have to come in last because you're making sure that no one got hurt along the way. So you sweep the course.
Thank you. Thank you for sweeping. Thank you. And thank you so much to our administration for supporting all of these events. We saw you at all of them, and you've been out and about on weekends in addition to weeknights. So we really appreciate your ongoing support for all of the above. Thank you. Other announcements? Just briefly, we want to thank you for all of the tours. We have been on many tours recently, not only for the facilities committee, thank you, but also learning tours. Thank you to Ashlyn Field, who's with us tonight, who opened her building and her classrooms, and to all of the teachers at Meadow Pond. We learned so much, and it was wonderful to be back in the building. And we know that it takes a lot of planning and thought and time away from other things to work with us and help us to understand your initiatives and what's happening in the building. And it really is so important and worthwhile, and we appreciate it very much. So thank you for that. And are there any other announcements? Not then, we would love to hear your announcements, Andrew. Thank you.
Thanks, Marjorie. Some of the very same ones, echoing the congratulations to the cast and crew of The Wedding Singer. It was amazing, as we've heard. I also want to echo the thanks to the community for the partnership around the creation of that trail. Really great testament to the partnership between school and community, and we really, really appreciate it. Spring sports are off to a somewhat rainy start, but still very enthusiastic. In fact, there was a game going on, if you noticed, this evening in the pouring rain going on. Unbelievable. Just a very quick update, and I'll be sending this one out in the mail tomorrow. We did a meeting back in January for our Increase Miller families about some enrollment challenges. And we'll be putting out an update tomorrow, so I just want to quickly summarize. We've been watching the enrollment. We're tracking it very closely at Increase Miller. And at the moment, the actual enrollment that we see for next year is running much closer to this year's enrollment than it is to the projected number, which I think current enrollment is 482, projected for next year was 513. So a big jump projected. Right now, we're not seeing that. We will continue to watch to see if things should change in the coming months. In addition, the new development that folks have been watching, the Lewisburg Commons go up on Route 22. We are in the process of zoning that for Katona Elementary School rather than Increase Miller, so that future students, if and when they arrive, will be going to Katona rather than Increase. We're also looking carefully at boundary lines between Increase Miller and Meadow Pond. And we will make every effort there, if we do make any adjustments. And this was feedback that we heard very clearly at the meeting with Increase Miller families. We will work very hard to maintain any families that have begun their Increase Miller experience. We'll try to keep them at Increase Miller. So we don't anticipate any changes there for next year. We'll hear from the facilities committee in a moment, but that group also is looking at potential space adjustments in the building that could help with enrollment challenges a little bit further down the road. So with all of that, we are comfortable saying that at this moment, we don't foresee the need for any programmatic changes at Increase Miller next year, which I think will come as a relief to members of that community. And we don't see other dramatic changes at this point. So we'll keep obviously watching, and if anything should change, we'll send out another update. I want to put in a plug for our next Learning Cafe, which is on April 26th, which is a week from the Tuesday when we return. This will be our second in-person Learning Cafe of this year. The Learning Cafe is for those who may not have attended. Our conversational opportunities, they're not presentational in style. If you come, which we hope you will, come join us in the middle school dining room. It's a chance to be in conversation with friends and neighbors and members of our staff around topics that we think are well-suited to conversation rather than presentation. The topic that night will be inclusion, the whats and whys, and the aspirations around inclusion, as well as some of the challenges. So for now, we just ask for you to save the date. I'll put a note out about that tomorrow. And then there'll be more formal invitations coming right after the break. And that just leads us to the fact that it's spring break next week. So we wish everybody happy holidays, whether you're celebrating Easter or Passover, and a reminder that Monday, the 18th, is no longer a weather reserve day. It's a day of school. So we'll all be back on Monday, the 18th. That's it.
That's great. Thank you so much. Thank you for that update. I'll pause briefly if there are any questions for Andrew before we move on, or any thoughts. Okay. Thank you so much. Welcome, Abigail. So nice to see you. Hope you're looking forward to spring recess. And if in the meantime, you could share a student update, we would love to hear from you. Thanks.
So March was a very busy month as elementary school students celebrated PARP and the school musicals and science fairs took place. Students are more than three-quarters of the way done with the 2021-2022 school year and are looking forward to the spring weather and spring break. In campus congress, we met yesterday, April 6th, and voted on the new executive board for the next school year. So candidates were able to present their speeches on what they wanted to change in our school and why they would be a good fit for this role. And the new executive board will run our next meeting on April 20th alongside the current board. In the high school, JV and varsity sports began on March 14th, and all the teams have been doing very well in their games. The Rite of Spring art show opened March 31st, where art students had the opportunity to present their work. The musical The Wedding Singer was presented March 31st through April 2nd by an extremely talented cast and crew. And community members of all ages came to see this production after a year without any live performances. And the Red Cross came to hold a blood drive with National Honor Society on April 1st and invited students, faculty, and community members to donate blood in order to offset the national blood shortage. In the middle school, the science fair was held March 2nd, and many students presented their findings on topics such as noise pollution, seed germination, and the science of running. The sixth grade game show night was held March 4th, and the musical Back to the 80s was presented March 10th through 12th, featuring 45 students who celebrated through the biggest hits of that decade. The eighth grade dance was March 18th, and modified sports began March 29th. At Increase Miller, the Fourth Annual Stream Convention was held March 15th and 16th, and students in the high school science research program came to help and interview the participants. On March 23rd, Reading Under the Stars took place as a part of PARP, which is celebrated throughout the month of March, and the annual spelling bee was held last night. At Meadow Pond, the fifth grade play Shrek the Musical was presented March 25th, and the science fair info session was April 5th, and their fair will be held April 21st. And lastly, at Katona Elementary School, Starry Story Night took place March 23rd, also as a part of PARP. And first graders dressed up as rock stars on March 23rd to celebrate that they're 120 days smarter. They did activities and ate snacks, all involving the number 120.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to hear your report, and it's great to see you smile throughout your report. Wonderful to hear how many terrific events are happening at every building, and we thank you for representing them so thoughtfully and comprehensively. Is this a new tradition, or has this always been the practice that your new exec board and your current exec board will run this next meeting of the year?
Yes, that usually happens, but it wasn't able to happen last year just because of COVID. But so there'll be a new Board of Ed Rep in a few meetings.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing that with us. Any questions for Abigail before we move on? No? Thank you so much. We appreciate all that you shared. So with the board's permission, I just want to suggest that we go briefly out of order and look ahead to one item in the consent agenda. And I'm going to turn it over to Andrew for some remarks. If I could have a motion to pull out 14.02 from the consent agenda. So moved by Bill and seconded by Catherine, we'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Marjorie.
Thank you.
As the board knows from a prior meeting, Ms. Dawn Palmeroy announced her resignation to take effect at the end of this school year. And we want to just take a moment to congratulate Dawn and thank her again for a terrific career in our schools, and wish her all the best as she moves on. And tonight, we're here to recommend Mr. David Bornas-Nay, who has come through a lengthy and rigorous search process at Meadow Pond led by Ashlyn Field with support from Neil Aliva, and lots and lots of involvement from staff and parents. And we appreciate all of that support and help in this process. I think David's had an opportunity to meet a lot of people. David is currently a first-grade teacher at George Davis Elementary School in New Rochelle. Prior to that, he was a teacher at two different schools in Brooklyn. He's been a mentor teacher. I believe he's been a math coach in his time, and now is very excited to be joining us here as the new Assistant Principal effective July 1 at Meadow Pond Elementary School. So we are very excited to recommend David Bornas-Nay, who was kind enough to join us here tonight with Ashlyn and some of their colleagues from Meadow Pond, to be here tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that introduction, and thank you so much for joining us this evening. We're thrilled to have an opportunity to meet you in person. Thank you, Ashlyn, for joining us, and to your colleagues for coming to support this really lovely announcement. Is there any further comment, or is anybody else going to say anything? Did you want me to pause further, or are we ready to move on?
I think we're ready to.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And if there's no further comment, we can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Six zero. Terrific. Thank you so much. It was wonderful to meet you.
Congratulations, David.
Congratulations. Welcome. 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 Okay. So now, if we can please go back up to our presentations for this evening. We are looking forward to our social studies presentation first. Social studies update, I should say. And it's my pleasure to turn it over to you, Mary.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And good evening, everyone. So I'm joined by three of my esteemed colleagues this evening. And I will, as they're transitioning, I will introduce them. So these are three of our curriculum leaders. So Guy Amder is our social studies curriculum leader from John Jay Middle School. Lauren Carrigan is our library media specialist leader from the high school, but she represents her colleagues across the district. And Charles Morales Thomason, also of social studies here at John Jay High School. So welcome to all of you, and thank you for being here.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Good to be here. So this evening, we wanted to give you an overview of some of the standards. And similar to the way we did the science presentation a few weeks ago, we wanted to update you on some of the new frameworks and what they mean, and what they mean for other subject areas as well. And you will definitely see some similarities. So this is this inquiry arc that's part of the New York State Social Studies framework. And you'll see that there are many parallels to the science presentation, the way the science standards are organized. So those unifying themes, and we'll talk more in depth about each one of the parts of that arc that you see, they are much like the cross-cutting concepts that we spoke about in the science presentation. And then there are the Common Core literacy skills and social studies practices. So you remember there were science and engineering practices as well. But it also looks at some of the standards for reading, writing, listening, and speaking, and how they relate to the social studies curriculum as well. There are key ideas and conceptual understandings, which were part of the NISLIS units that we shared with you as well. And the disciplinary core ideas are much like the content specifications that you see here in this arc. So there are lots of parallels to the way New York State is organizing their curriculum documents, which are really helpful to us. And when we think about inquiry, that's something that we think about in every subject area. So it's really helpful that it is part of social studies as well, and that it's named in this framework. And you can see on the slide there that that's based on the college, career, and civic life framework for state standards in social studies, published by the National Council for the Social Studies in 2013. In 2014, the new framework was initially published, and then there were revisions in 2016 and 2017. And that's where we are today. So the inquiry arc, as mentioned, inquiry is a part of everything we do. So developing those questions, applying the disciplinary concepts and tools. You'll hear a lot more this evening about how we evaluate sources and use evidence, which is not specific just to social studies, but very important in social studies, and thinking about how we communicate our conclusions and take action. So relates to our focus areas, relates to other subject areas as well. And then we have these 10 unifying themes. I won't read through them all, but you can see there that, you know, when you think about our work with diversity, equity, and inclusion, there are certainly themes that relate to that. There are themes that relate to civic participation, which is another big part of the social studies standards, and just kind of systems and how they work, and even the science, technology, and innovation pieces. So it's really helpful when we're trying to make connections for students and do interdisciplinary work across different concepts that they're learning and different classes. So it really provides lots of opportunity for us to do that. But I will turn it over to Lauren to speak a little bit about the standards in ELA specific to, these are 612 standards, specific to the disciplinary subject areas.
Right. And, you know, of course, I'm coming at this from the library perspective, but librarians, of course, also consider this a shared responsibility, that we're working collaboratively with the teachers, one-on-one with students, in their development of literacy. And of course, the library provides a wide range of informational texts to supplement the textbooks and the readings in the classroom. We have biographies and memoirs, speeches, essays. Of course, we have nonfiction in history and social sciences, and all of this is available in both print and digital formats. We also have a number of databases to support literacy, and that provides students and faculty access to articles, primary sources, scholarly journals, newspapers, magazines. And all of these materials are chosen so that they meet the needs of students wherever they are. So from ninth grade global all the way up through the AP level courses, and the same in the elementary and the middle schools. We're very aware of making sure that we have enough materials to support all of the students where they are. The databases in particular are also really good to support visual literacy. They include maps and surveys, tables and charts, which provides a whole different kind of skill to interpret all of those. So, you know, we do as much supplementation as we can, students that want to go beyond what they're learning in the classroom, or if it sparks an interest. Sometimes there's a graphic novel, or maybe there's just a YA novel that kind of can continue with a topic or a theme that they're interested in. We find that happens a lot, like after they read Mouse, they're like, right here, they want Mouse 2, and wow, I didn't know graphic novels were like this. What else do you have? So it's often a springboard for just individual work with students to help them find reading for their own personal interests.
And I'll say that with regard to the standards, you see that it is a wide range there. Obviously, the history is what many of us think of as social studies, but it's much more. It's much broader in terms of the social science that it is, really emphasizing economics, economic systems, geography, as well as world history and its evolution over time. And civic engagement, as Mary already alluded to, the idea that these are all just as critical, each one's equally as critical. It's not the idea that we are just focused on looking at linear history. And a lot of times, some students come with that conception. Are we going to learn about this? Are we going to learn about that? It tends to be compartmentalized in terms of periodic episodes. So I think this gives you a general sense, the lenses through which we look through as social scientists. And then here, you could see the progression. I don't think you can see it up there, but you can see that, you know, the natural progression, like if you have children, you know that it goes from me, who am I? Who am I in my community? And what's the role of community? And where do I fit in here? Right on to the state and what the state's function is, to, you know, local and state government, right on up to federal government. And the progression leads us to sixth grade, where there's an eastern hemisphere thrust after they've had a great amount of study of the western hemisphere. And then they return back to coming off the Colombian exchange and everything else and settling here, and then looking at that for seventh and eighth grade, right up through global and through high school as well. So the progression makes a lot of sense, and then to get to more global and interactive parts of the world. That tends to be more the emphasis of the upper grades. See global connections among and between them.
And it's exciting, when I was listening to Guy just now, what you started kindergarten with about me, and then it just broadens and builds and builds. And by the time they get to be seniors, they have such a knowledge base, you can really go in a lot of different directions. And, you know, as we've seen in the past couple of months, with so many, past couple of years, with the changes in American politics and the presidential election, everything that we've seen, and what happened in the Capitol a year ago, and then the past two months with what's happening in Ukraine. It got to a point with Ukraine, not that I was fighting against, let's not talk about it, but it got to a point when I had to talk about it. They were coming in the doors, it was just on their, it was on their minds, it was on their, you know, on their conversations. So once we started trying to give an overview and explain a few things, all the questions were coming up because they've learned so many different things, and they know about American history, they know about the Cold War, they know about Europe and North America. So in that sense, from a teacher of the 12th graders, it made it that much easier because I already knew they had a good knowledge base already, for sure. And then when we were looking at this here, Guy and I were talking about it before, you know, every one of these practices can be used in just about every classroom. We had a department meeting the other day, and I was mentioning to some of my colleagues, what are some things that we, you know, you'd like me to mention? What could we talk about here? And every course, whether it was Global 9 or US History, and there's so much, you know, DEI, the diversity and equity and the inclusion and the multi-different perspectives. And Guy and I were just talking before about the middle school assessments and the high school assessments. And clearly, there's a shift, as we all know, from like rote memorization, who's the person that signed this and what was the date? It's more about, you know, the skills. Or if they do give you a document that was written by Jefferson, it's more about, what do we know about Jefferson and the time at which it was written, and who's the audience, and how might it be by? So, for example, the Global Regents Exam is shifting now, and it's becoming more of that skills there. And so rather than just say, write a thematic essay about a conflict and the causes and effects of World War I, you have to do more of analysis of the situation, which is kind of exciting. So it just becomes a force of habit now, whether it's in a Global 10 Regents class or whether it's an AP class. It's become standard practice every time we'll read a document. Who wrote this, and why do you think they wrote it? And how might the audience perceive it? And all sorts of things. When we looked at, you know, when Putin was talking about why he's invading Ukraine, or whatever it might be. So those habits that they've developed in the middle school years have now just become standard in the high school years. And we're always asking ourselves those kinds of questions. So that would be kind of like gathering, interpreting, using evidence there. And the other thing that we see a lot is the idea of multiple perspectives. We have to do it, for example, in the AP class because it's one of the criteria for the essays. But it's interesting because you get it everywhere. There's a course in high school called Sports in American Society. So we do a unit there, and we talk about gender and how gender impacts sports and that sort of thing. And then at the end of the unit, we might have a panel discussion, and we'll assign each student a different role there. So we'll get that. When we talked about, there's another course for the seniors and juniors called World at War. And we began the year in the fall by looking at the US and Afghanistan, because it was last August that the US forces were pulling out. And there was articles and stories in the paper about the crowds at the airport and all the refugees essentially saying, don't leave without me, take me with you. So we were talking about the responsibility that the US might have towards the refugees, and we looked at that. And then we also looked at refugees that were coming out of Syria in recent years, and refugees leaving Libya and getting on these boats and trying to make it across the Mediterranean Sea, and the dangers that go along with that. And then unexpectedly, of course, we have now four million refugees leaving Ukraine. So it gave us a chance to go back to that topic of refugees. And then we also looked at why Poland and Europe seems to be embracing all of these refugees from Ukraine, and not that there's anything wrong with that for sure, but then the question was, well, how come refugees, by and large, aren't always accepted? How come refugees from Central and South America have a difficult time to get into the US? So it was an interesting way for us to look at why some refugees are welcomed, some are not. Some nations welcome them, some don't. So the idea that there's different perspectives, whether it's analyzing the document or analyzing, you know, like I said, the war refugees, that's always evident there.
And I think to dovetail with what Charles is saying, the idea that we've laid a foundation for these kinds of conversations to happen, where there's multiple perspectives and everybody gets to have their different perspectives raised and voices raised from all different parts of society, and that we listen attentively, and we comment thoughtfully, and we question it thoughtfully as well. And I think that is some, a thread that you'll see goes through the entire social sciences, especially in social studies. Everybody does understand multiple points of view, and that being right isn't necessarily the desire here, that the views that are rooted in history and rooted in reason and rooted in cause, causal thinking and other things like that. So as they explore all these multiple sources, and we're showing them primary and secondary sources being made daily. We have a secondhand source. We had somebody, I was able to tell them about a Ukrainian friend of mine who actually has firsthand accounts of somebody who witnessed something in her village and wrote about it. It becomes a primary document. So it's not just dusting off, you know, the Pericles funeral oration. So it's the idea that they are understanding and appreciating sourcing documents and understanding that these documents have to be carefully and thoughtfully contextualized to fully appreciate their value and meaning.
We've talked about, in the European history class, we were talking about the events that led to World War II and the growth of the popularity of Mussolini, the popularity of Hitler. We talked about the Munich Conference and his justification for why the people in the Sudanland had to come back to Germany. And the kids were listening, and I said, it's the same thing. It's the same thing with Putin. Putin says, I have to go in there and save the Ukrainians from the growth of Nazism. So I said, you just change the words a little bit here and there, and it's the same thing. And then you could see, you know, more of the heads nodding. And like you said, it's not just, let's not just, again, go back to the Munich Conference and dust that off, but let's make those connections. And as we all know, the more things change, the more they seem to stay the same. So we've seen that a lot in the past couple of months.
Yes.
And I'm not sure even what slide's coming up next. But so I may be jumping ahead to my, but, you know, my part of this, as Charles and Guy keep saying, multiple viewpoints and analyzing it and contextualizing it, and, you know, a big part of what I'm constantly reminding the students of is, you know, what is your source, right? How do you know where this is coming from? Did you read that on Twitter? Was it something on Instagram? If you're not sure where that's coming from, then you need to research the source that you found, you know, which is called lateral reading. So everything that you're looking at, you can't take it for face value. That includes all kinds of images and charts. You know, people see a picture on Instagram and they just automatically think like, oh my gosh, look at this, this is unbelievable, and then they share it, right? So I'm always saying to them, especially when you have that real emotional reaction to something that you see, or you hear, or you read, or it's being forwarded and passed on and liked by everybody in your social media environment, you really got to stop and figure out where that came from, and if it's something that you should be believing, something that you should be sharing, or something that you should be asking about.
In the Global 10 Regents Class, have you, the students read, in the spring, they read a research paper, five, 10 pages or so. And they don't just have to list, a list of their sources of bibliography, it's annotated bibliography. So it's exactly what Lauren's talking about. We give them a prompt and talk about each source, and who wrote it, and who might they be writing it for, and how might it be biased? They're not thrilled about it, because more often than not, students will say, I got the whole paper done, I just have to go home tonight and just pop in my EZBIB and make it. And then they'll come back and say, the annotated bibliography took me longer than the whole paper. And it turned out to be three or four pages, because you have to write like a whole paragraph for each of their sources.
Right.
But it gets them to think about it.
And at first, they don't like to go to the databases. It feels like more work than just using Google. But usually, once we get them in there and show them how the databases work and how easy they are to search now, and that they are designed for student end-users, and they really learn how to work with the interface, so that they, you know, sources are identified. It will tell you right there, if this is an opinion piece, if this is from an encyclopedia, if this is from a newspaper, if this is from a scholarly journal. So, you know, they're kind of absorbing all of that and recognizing, oh, these are categorized into different sources, so that I know what I'm looking at. And I know by going into the database that this is a reliable source. So, you know, we steer them as much as we can towards that end result.
And that relates to that progression there of the practices. So that was just one example.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can see grades nine to 12 down there at the bottom, just what Lauren was saying, identify, describe, and evaluate evidence about events from diverse sources, you know, so that that evaluation piece that you were mentioning is such an important piece for students to consider.
Yep, yep. And the other thing I've been trying to stress a lot too, and this was sort of news to me, that the search engines, well, I mean, we sort of know that, you know, in our back of our heads, that search engines have these algorithms that they use to give us results. But it's become more and more clear that those results are very biased. And if you want to make sure that you're getting voices and opinions and information about all people, different people, wide variety of voices, you need to actively use language that's going to give you a return on that search. And I'm looking forward to a workshop tomorrow. Actually, the title is "How Search Engine Algorithms Reinforce Racism and Interactive Demonstration and Discussion to Promote More Equitable Searches." So I should learn more there to bring back to the students.
And then this right here gives you a little bit of how it's presented for us as the roadmap, and how we pull this apart and make this into meaningful lessons, and how we structure it around this idea. But really, everything starts with a question. It's a student question, it's organic, it's a teacher question, it's stimulating question, and it's usually a very provocative question of some sort that we have to kind of get to the root of. And there's no easy, clear-cut answer, and that's where the research comes in, and that's where evaluation and looking at all of these multiple sources, and then learning how to identify the types of sources, text structures, and then also how to craft some writing around that as well, and understanding fully what they've had in their ELA experiences and English experiences, and building on that, and making sure that we're using all of those skills as well to give them that forum.
So we thought we'd just speak a little bit about some of the work that's happening at each level currently, and this kind of meshes as well with the next slide to talk about how the focus areas that we have are impacting the work also at each level. We don't have a leader currently for social studies at the elementary level, so I'll speak to that. So, right before I arrived, actually, I remember, it was my first meeting I ever attended officially here, we were adopting some new elementary social studies resources called TCI. So our teachers had been working on units at that time, so that was just after the framework was introduced. So they had those new resources. And we also have a set of kindergarten through eighth grade social studies ELA resources that are online resources from our PNW BOSIS. So there are some digital resources there that we can use. So teachers can use a variety of those things, but as you've heard, at the upper levels, and it's true at elementary too, they often supplement, and they're often thinking about how things go together. So actually, tomorrow, we have a big curriculum day planned at elementary for our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers. We have one representative from each building coming together with two of our Teachers' College consultants, with our three principals, Alison Porcelli, staff developer, and me as well. And we're going to look at the units, thinking about our ELA units for next year, and how we might embed many of the social studies standards and practices into them, as well as some of the work with DEI, SEL, so thinking about the social justice standards, very big picture, but where do they fit into units, social emotional competencies, and even education for sustainability. There are now some standards from the Cloud Institute that help us think about those as well. So we're looking for places where we can embed this meaningfully in the work. So we're really excited about doing that tomorrow.
I see the social emotional learning, and it's not so much content, but some of the things that we talk about in the classroom, like responsible decision-making. For example, I teach a 10th grade AP class, and so the AP exam is coming up soon. So we've talked all year, especially now, about time management and avoiding procrastination and trying to, you know, chunk out your work and do a little bit each night. And of course, all year, we talk about try not to get too frustrated with a couple of low scores, and try to focus on the bigger picture and the growth over the years. And then with the seniors, I have a couple of senior elective classes, so a lot of my focus is on saying that let's use this year to get ready for next year. And next year, of course, should be away from home and more independent and that sort of thing. So again, go to office hours, meet with your professors, but then also, you know, Tommy, put away the phone, you know, put your laptop down, put the phone away, and let's focus on being here. So we try to work on some of those decisions. So again, it's more about the relationships that kids can have with each other versus, you know, just with their devices.
And at the middle level, I mean, we clearly, it's a transition year to sixth grade, and we have the added advantage that the sixth grade teachers are ELA and social studies teachers. So in the team configuration, that's ideal, because we know what we're controlling in terms of what they're getting in exposure to the types of literacy skills and development. And we can dovetail beautifully with the social studies, being the social studies teachers as well. So it's wonderful, because we get to mesh them almost seamlessly. Great Outgrowth, you might have heard about recently, was the basketball game to raise water for South Sudan, and, you know, sixth graders entering and then reading about A Long Walk to Water, and becoming aware of the struggles of Sudan and its breaking away and division, ethnic and also religious issues that have faced the country, and then reading this narrative, which many sixth graders, year after year, say it's their favorite read of all time. And so we just keep doing it because they tell us to do it for the next year. It's from their recommendation. But from there came the idea of the civic engagement. Where do we, how do we help these people? And then that formulated from a sixth grade desire to raise money and get our school on the roadmap of saying, we're helping to fund some water irrigation system to get , you know, clear water, clear, safe drinking water for South Sudan. And we're able to raise a good amount of money, but had tremendous buy-in. Imagine sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at the middle school, and even, I dare say, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, who all read this book and all understood where this came from. This was not some foreign concept. So in terms of community awareness, in terms of engagement, and getting the word out there, and buy-in, it was just a wonderful experience that illustrates how this dovetailed with, and the idea that we were back in a gym together, and without, we were in a place gathering once again, where students had watched Cohort A and B last year. We have students in sixth grade this year that haven't been in a building prior years. You know, they didn't, and some are joining us now. So it's a very big reintegration. And so we're always delicately dealing with that, and at the same time, with a variety of resources, we consult with ELA social studies resources through BOSIS. It has a wonderful variety of ways of meshing all this together and giving us grade-level appropriate work that's very carefully vetted and well-executed. We also have Facing History as a resource for our eighth and ninth grade, where we'll use protocols and we'll use various lessons that come from there to help elevate the voices of those people in terms of racial, in terms of equity, in terms of inclusion, helping to see multiple perspectives throughout history, and honoring the voices of those that might not have been stated explicitly over the years, and helping to see and locate source material and build that up. And that's why we have such a wide variety of sources, and we aren't necessarily locked into a textbook per se, but have one as a main focus and that they can go back to. A lot of times, you'll see that the social studies textbooks become compilations of primary and secondary source materials on the topics. So they kind of do it that way and sell it for a hefty price, and we know that too. But at the same time, we as active educators in the field and social scientists are always culling the latest and getting the latest and being able to incorporate that. And with, you know, but just touching on all those areas, that becomes, again, the lenses through which all of our instruction is seen through.
Okay, so I'll just read off a list of a couple of things that we're all doing. You know, we like to think that our print collections are always well-rounded, but we have done diversity audits of our collection. It's a service that's provided by Fallot, that provides our library software, and it really gives us information, very nitty-gritty information about our collections. It will tell us exactly how many biographies we have that are about or by men, or women, or people of color, or indigenous people. And it will even break down genres and categorize those and give us information on where our collections really need to be developed, so that it is as complete as we think it is in our heads, because of course, we all have our own biases as we're making those decisions. We like to think that coming into the library may provide some bibliotherapy for some students as opposed to retail therapy, or video game therapy, or whatever else they might spend their free time doing. But, you know, really, reading can support positive mental health. Maybe they need an escape, or a laugh, or a good cry, and the right book will kind of provide that for them. And children's and young adult literature also really does help students to understand social and emotional issues, diversity, biases, and it can help to relieve stress and increase in their coping skills. We know, of course, that reading allows our students to step into others' shoes. We're hoping that these experiences, reading about events and experiences from other perspectives, helps them in turn empathize and may challenge assumptions or biases or misconceptions or stereotypes that they have. Not new, it's, you know, one thing that we always do is to curate and share special collections with teachers, so that students have titles from diverse authors that include characters from a variety of cultural backgrounds and socioeconomic statuses. We have audiobooks and ebooks, and those also have special accessibility features, so that it will support our diverse learners. I am very excited to tell you that we have started a new book club at the high school, and this is a chapter of a national book club called Project Lit. And the mission of Project Lit is to put books that represent a wide variety of people, of opinions, religions, ethnicities, you know, the whole gamut, so the students can see themselves in literature. And part of their mission is also to put an end to book deserts. So we will be doing some drives to collect books and fundraisers, so that we can purchase books. We're going to collaborate with the Lakota Club and send books out to the reservation. So yeah, it's a really great group of kids, and that's been a wonderful experience getting that going with them.
And I just want to add that you brought up the accessibility, which is a very big feature, where it's no longer the days where, well, if you can't interact with the textbook, you can't learn social studies. So if you didn't read 73 to 84 tonight, and you didn't understand it, you're now privy to that information. So they are getting wide accessibility. There's a lot of resources available today that weren't years prior, and we also can cull from different ones, and we can take into account our knowledge of where they are as readers. And we can use that to tailor certain instruction as well. So that's ideal in the middle school, and everybody is well-aware of where students are in terms of their reading, understanding, what they could manage and handle. Would it be an unreasonable expectation to say, go read this level textbook, and we expect you to have the same understanding and grasp as that child who might not be in the same place, or have the same context in which this occurred? So we're constantly looking at sources through those lenses as well. I just wanted to bring that up, you reminded me of it.
So we thought we'd now turn it over to all of you to see if you had any questions, and thank you to my colleagues for inventing some beautiful.
Thank you. We really appreciate the update and your insight into how the standards have evolved since we've last had an opportunity to talk about social studies. And I think, I have to think we all experienced it this way, that more than anything, just your immersion in your content areas and your connectedness to students and your prioritization of reading and all of these important skills that transcend, as you said earlier, like a linear teleology of time or something, it's really amazing. The things that we've covered in this short period of time that you've talked with us about, I think really model for us your dedication to teaching and to helping our students evolve as readers and social scientists. And I'm not really sure what more we could ask for, so that all sounded really great. And thank you. I mean, that was very helpful, really appreciated. And it's just a pleasure to hear you speak about your vision. It really is somewhat visionary for what you're trying to do with our kids as learners, and to help them stay connected to learning and to reading. I was going to ask, like, is the library open after school? You know, because just hearing the way you're speaking about, and inspiring kids to stay connected to reading, and then there it was, you know. connected to reading, and then there it was, you know, Project Lit, you're doing something after school with these kids. And it's just really terrific, hearing about the panel that you facilitate. We're talking about different spaces, you know, on the Facilities Committee and opportunities, like with the Step Labs becoming something else. And my mind just sort of went to like, oh, wouldn't it be great to have an amazing space for that kind of an activity? So there's a lot to think about tonight. Thank you. That was really, really enjoyable. And I'll pause there and turn the floor over to my board colleagues if you have questions or comments, please.
I'll echo Marjorie. Your enthusiasm is contagious. I wish we could pause the meeting and just have a big social studies discussion. I also want to thank Lauren specifically. I read recently the John Jay High School curriculum, no, it was the weekly update or whatever it is, bi-weekly. I read about the Project Lit, and my husband and I were taking two of our children up to Buffalo for a hockey tournament. And I'm like, wow, it's six and a half hours in the car, and what are we going to do with them? I don't want their phone on the phone the whole time. And I just read about Project Lit, so I emailed Lauren, and she got right back to me with some audiobook suggestions. We read, well, we listened in turn, and it was great. So thank you so much. I have a couple of avid readers, and all of them have been so, librarians in the middle school and the high school have been so accessible and have been so great that they go in, and they just are so good about giving them books that they want to read. So I appreciate your enthusiasm, all of you. Thank you. I enjoyed this discussion.
Thank you.
I think I said some of the same things last time, but hopefully people have a short memory. I'm always struck, and I remember that I went into a field of science, but I learned how to assemble evidence or the importance of evaluating your source, supporting your argument. I learned that from my high school social studies courses. So I'm very happy to hear, and I remember you made my younger son especially a much better arguer. He won many more arguments after this. One thing that comes to mind is, you know, I always find, like, the social studies stuff is so inherently interesting. Maybe it's just my bias, but it's just so inherently interesting. It can include current events and things that are on your mind today. Sort of two questions. One is, when you have some of these discussions that you were talking about, whether it's about Ukraine, or I think it's actually a very interesting question about the different handling of refugees from different areas of the country, that's occurred to me. One question is, it's wonderful if most, if not all, the students are comfortable talking about this sort of thing, and/or can speak about any of this with, you know, knowledge, and not just what they saw their friends say on Twitter yesterday. So, you know, do you get the sense that they're either because of your efforts or around your efforts, they're really learning what to say? That's one thing. And then the other question is, maybe for some of the other topics, do you get a diversity of opinion? Because one of the things that I do remember from my kids was, they loved, especially the younger one, would take the opposite argument, just to take the opposite argument, and just to like play devil's advocate, and to go on the other side of things, even if it was some ridiculous things. Do you see a diversity of opinion? Like, it's fascinating what you said, that people are assigned roles, you know? You're going to play the role of the, you know, slave owner, and you have to discuss that role. So do you get the sense that they're absorbing, they're speaking knowledgeable, and then you get a diversity of opinions, or at least people willing to, I don't know, sign of intelligence, is you can hold two arguments in your head at the same time, you know?
It's funny, you know, you say that I had a class, I don't know, years ago, and it was a bit of a quiet Period Four class. And so I, we were talking something related to World War II and Hitler, and I wasn't sure if we were going to really get into it. So I had a student who walked in, I pulled him aside, I said, listen, if class is going flat, I'm going to point to you, and I need you to take an unpopular stance, just to stir it up. And he's like, I'm ready. Just as I expected, you know, I was pushing all my buttons, nothing seemed to work. And I said, so Johnny, what do you think? And he said something that was, you know, bold and probably a little bit inappropriate, but it worked, because it got everybody fired up. He was, he was taking a stance that something that Hitler might have approved of, and said, I think this is what our policy should be. And so he took it, and then it lit a fire in everybody, and then we had a good conversation. He walked out, he winked at me, and I gave him a three. And it worked. But, you know, I had, I went out to dinner the other day, and I was talking to somebody, and he said, what do you do? And I told him that I teach, and this and that. And he very politely and delicately asked me, well, how do you talk about politics in your school? And I said, well, you know, there's kids that come in, and they lean one way, and kids that come in and lean the other way. And like we've, we've heard from Dr. Siciliano these past couple of years, you know, our job is just to allow everybody to feel comfortable and have an open exchange. And so I tried to make the classroom comfortable, so that everybody, you know, nobody is castigated for feeling one way. And we also try to understand why people might feel a certain way. So when we're talking about the Capitol ride a year ago, we're trying to understand what would, what would cause certain people to act in a certain feeling? What is, how do they view the nation? You know, some people view it this way, they view it that way. So by, by me not taking a stand and just trying to guide them to learn how to think versus what to think, and by, you know, by therefore allowing people to have these points of view, and sometimes assigning them, you're this role, you're that role, hopefully, over time, that allows a sense of comfort and allows, you know, them to understand different perspectives. And like I said before with the AP, when you write an essay, in order to get the highest possible credit, you have to show the opposing viewpoint. So it's built in, we always need to have a thesis, you always have to make your point, and then at some point you have to address the other side. So not only is it encouraged, but in certain circumstances, it's required. So hopefully, over time, that makes them feel more comfortable.
And I think you bring up a very good point. We can't underestimate the fact that third, fourth, fifth graders with cell phones are not getting flashes of every piece of information. It's not uncommon for an eighth-period social studies student in sixth grade to say, are we, are we going to help them bomb Ukraine today? And then you say, well, wait, let's back that up. Then another person saying, yeah, we're going to have World War III, and that's how the class starts. Well, so let's back up. So should I talk about Ahsoka's achievements during, you know, the Indian rule that we're talking about, or should, should we address this? So you have kids who are coming ready with a great many things that probably popped up as the popular news feed on an already biased calculus and algorithm. But this is really, and where they're getting their information, how we are doing it, and helping students realize where we've looked at everything from, you know, what should our role be, where some, one student said, well, we shouldn't even be, you know, getting involved. And what, you know, and you could see that it's a sixth grader coming in, and clearly shaped by his experiences and lifestyle and everything else, and understanding that. And yet, somebody in the same class said, well, my grandmother is half-Ukrainian, and she lives in Queens. And, you know, so you hear this other piece, and that kind of becomes very real and immediate. So who would not get involved? And so that becomes a discussion right there. So I would say the necessity for being ready for the discussions and to honor the discussions has become more necessary and essential for every educator. You really have to come with what's being presented. If there's a current event happening, when George Floyd was taking place, that's what took place in our classroom. And those kinds of things, when we see the slap that was heard around the world at the Oscars, that's what sixth graders came in and talked about. And the idea, and one student came in and said, well, if that was a woman, he never would have hit her. And that set off a whole different set of things. So then that becomes a whole topic, a rich conversation, where we have to then cleverly and tactfully walk them back to curriculum and at the same time honor that.
It must be that this tension, we saw a movie a few years ago, there was this tension about, I have to cover this amount of stuff in order to get you ready for the AP test, so we're going to plow through it and ignore, you know, the reality happening outside the building, or I'm going to go into these things with you. And you know what? We might not learn as much about the, you know, Spanish-American war as I had thought we would.
Exactly. And I think that's what we've learned over the past couple decades, is the idea that less is more in some cases, and depth is more, and understanding the big ideas, and being able to interpret, synthesize, and see relationships among and between. So that really has been a movement, where it's no longer that purely linear progression.
And I think when you look at the standards, you know, and the focus on different practices and skills, and yes, there's content, too, but it's not about content delivery, but developing those skills, and, you know, sometimes through the content, but on a given day, the content might have to shift. But you're still working on critical thinking and those practices and those skills, very artfully it sounds.
I had two questions. One, sort of building on that, around what opportunities exist in school, but maybe outside of the classroom, for integration of these social science or social studies practices, like Abigail was talking about earlier, of sort of campus congress and the exchange of power and sort of modeling what different democratic processes look like. I'm curious what other places that where people might sort of practice that at school?
I know that, you know, we have two popular clubs at the school. One is JSA, and then the other would be Model UN. So right off the bat, those are clubs that the students can partake in, where there's the debate and the multiple perspectives and all sorts of things like that.
And I would throw in the school newspaper also.
Right. And LGBTQ groups, and then we also have as well, students, they are able to, you know, in addition to what Charles is saying, the student government in the middle school. So they have that as well, and they do speeches, and they have a congress, and they, you know, they have elections, they understand the process that's involved as well, and anybody can run. And it's really their first exposure in the middle school to seeing different types of people, different, you know, all the schools are coming together, and how they, who, when we listen to the speech, what are we looking for? And certain students who emerge in some ways as leaders here, maybe not there, or some students who never anticipated this in sixth grade are now right in the throes of it in eighth grade, and have found themselves in a whole different position. So it's always, that, those are good avenues and outlets.
And then I guess this is more for Mary, but I'm curious what social studies looks like at the elementary, I mean, you sort of outlined the five or six years of it. But in terms of where it fits in to like kind of classroom time with other things, is it sort of a set thing, or how is it integrated across the rest of the day?
Yeah. Time is a challenge at elementary. It really is. So that's why we're doing some of this work tomorrow, to think about ways we can integrate. On the one hand, it can be more meaningful when it's integrated in that way. And on the other concern is efficiency, because there's, you know, we heard about all the new science standards and piloting new things, and teachers are learning new curriculum, phenomenon-based, which is wonderful, but it takes more time. And similarly with social studies, we want to make sure we have enough time to explore those practices and skills, but it is a challenge, for sure. So we're looking at those opportunities to integrate more, especially ELA. And as we heard at sixth grade, that kind of happens naturally because of the configuration that we have right now. But also looking for those opportunities in elementary as well, with some of our ELA units. And some really lend themselves quite easily, you know, research-based units, where you can think about the social studies content and use the research, you know, the reading, writing skills that you're trying to teach, so those can come together pretty naturally.
Just sort of in that same way, I know that in my children's classroom, there are some democratic practices, or that there's sort of civic tools that they're using. Have our elementary schools ever had like a student government in the, at the elementary school level?
We have student leaders, like at Meadow Pond, they have fifth-grade ambassadors. I think they have leaders actually at each of the elementary schools in some way. I don't know that it's a formal student government, but it is interesting, having more and more conversations about including students. I know Abigail was part of the conversation we had the other day. We were looking at our district's code of conduct, right, and we want to make sure we have student voices in the room as well. We had a sustainability in our schools meeting today. We have student members on that committee, too. So getting more student voice in everything we do, which I think is really helpful.
Other comments or questions? No? Thank you so much. We really appreciate your time and thought on this. Thank you. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you so much, Marion. Thank you to our curriculum leaders. Have a great evening. Thank you. Have a nice spring recess. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you so much. I think we're ready now to transition to our conversation related to the work of our Facilities Committee. It's my pleasure to welcome Russ Davidson, our architect, who's joined us tonight. And I will turn it over to Donell and Liz, please.
Thank you. I'm actually looking for some, forward to some bibliotherapy over spring break. Before we get there, the Facilities Committee has continued to meet. We have such a great cross-section of people from throughout the district and with different expertise. We are making a lot of progress. We are, we're nearly finished with our tour of all of the buildings, and Donell is going to walk you through the timeline for the overall project. And so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Donell. But I just did want to thank all of the building leadership administrators, Paul Christensen in particular, for the wonderful building tours we've had. They've led to a lot of great questions and understanding about the work that we are doing.
Thank you. Terrific.
Thanks, Liz. So tonight, I just want to give the board and our community an update and start with a little history of where we are with our facilities and our Facilities Committee. So back in March of 2021, so a full year ago, KGND came to our board meeting and presented our five-year building condition survey. Building condition survey is required every five years by New York State Education Department. Once we have a building condition survey, the architect then converts that into what's known as a five-year capital improvement plan. And we use this as a tool to manage the district's capital needs. The plan includes necessary work to maintain each facility in good working order, and also prioritizes that work. The requirement of the five-year plan does not necessitate that all projects in that plan need to be completed. It's rather just an outline of how we can improve our schools and things that may need to be worked on. So we use that as a guide. And also, the five-year plan doesn't preclude us from adding different projects to help with our facilities. It's just strictly a guide. So on June 3 of 2021, the board approved the five-year capital improvement plan. This plan opened doors for a great opportunity for the board to input into our facilities and also an opportunity to create our Facilities Committee. The Facility Committee continues to look at the, at the plan in depth and uses it as a guide for future improvements, and look for renovations, enhancements, and anything that will help our instructional spaces at our schools. In October, the board approved a Facilities Committee charge. The Facilities Committee charge was for us to look at the five-year capital plan in conjunction with other facility and learning needs and opportunities identified by the administration to consider options for future facility maintenance and enhancements. And also, the committee was charged with a study, to study the feasibility of various financing options to support the needs and opportunities defined through the course of its review. So in November and December, the Facilities Committee began to have preliminary discussions. And then in the beginning of 2022, we outreach to the community, and we created what is known as our Full Facilities Committee now. And I believe it's about 17 people on the committee, and that's including administration and having Russ join us for our meetings. So throughout the months of January and February, we began what we call our focus groups. We met at the individual schools with the administration, with community members, with teachers, students, when age-appropriate, joined us as well. And then we also began what we called our walkthroughs of the buildings, and all of our, not all of our community members, we met in different bunches, but most of our community members on our Facility Committee were able to join us and walk the buildings. We will continue to finalize that in April. We have one more building that we need to walk through, and we had our final focus group this afternoon. And so that will bring us through April. And we have quite a, quite a busy schedule until June, so the Facilities Committee will continue. So the facilities committee will continue to meet and look over the five-year capital plan, discuss our, our tours of the building, discuss the focus groups. And then hopefully in June, we will come to the board with a more detailed report of where we are at and the facilities committee may recommend a capital project at that point. We do have some significant debt falling off in a future year. So it's a good opportunity that, for KLS schools to have a bigger project at that time. And that bigger project may be tax neutral to the community or just a slight increase. That's something that the facility committee will recommend to the board. So if that is the case, if we do decide to move forward with this project, we would not move forward without a community vote and that would look like October of this, of 2022 for a vote. So that's our 32nd overview of facilities committee. And Liz or Russ, if you had something else to add, please feel free.
I think I'm off that first.
Well, we worked together with the administration to design a process and I would say it's working really well. So we've learned a lot, including from students, about how they felt in good science labs and bad science labs. And, you know, it's been a lot of great insight, that today's focus group with the special needs and the SEPTA group was also very insightful. So our firm has this slogan, listen, imagine, build. And we're, we're finishing up with the listening. Last night, we started to talk about the imagining a new high school and renewed portions of the high school. And it's going to be a tough job for your committee and ultimately the board because you do have significant needs. And, you know, we, we talk about the capital projects that have happened here and the last significant one was 2003. And somebody reminded me today that the iPhone wasn't even invented then. And so it was a different time. And also circulating by email today was the, the cover article of Architectural Record from 1957, when this high school was a state-of-the-art high school in 1957 on the cover of an architectural, the architectural magazine. And, you know, the 1998 projects also were award-winning in 2003, but that's 20 years ago. And there's still actually some 1955 buildings relatively untouched at the high school. And we all know, I love hearing your social studies presentation, reminds me that great stuff goes on here and I'm proud that my kids graduated here. But the, there's still a lot that needs to be done at some of the elementaries and STEM education, outdoor classrooms. And then some basic infrastructure that we all learned about in COVID, how important ventilation is. So it's going to be challenging, but I'd say the process is working and stay tuned.
Thank you very much, Russ.
Thanks, Danelle. I think that's where we are from facilities perspective and we will get back to you soon.
Great. We really appreciate the overview of the timeline. Thank you for the high-level overview of the challenge that we will be facing in some of our deliberations. And I'll just pause in case anybody has a comment or question. And if not, stay tuned. And it sounds like the committee will be back in June with a more extensive overview or a deeper dive. Yeah. Thank you so much for joining us, Russ. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Danelle. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Terrific. Okay. Why don't we go back and do board subcommittee reports since we're already kind of midstream with our facilities committee? Did you have anything else to add from the facilities committee, Liz?
No, you know, I think you, you just said, so I guess yes. You had said that there are challenges, but I just want to take a minute to remind everyone here that challenges are always also, you know, opportunities to reimagine how we do things and to do them better. So I think it's very exciting work that we're doing.
Absolutely. Well said. Very much agree. Anything else from facilities or we're all good there? Okay. Thank you. And I know we have some audit news this evening on our consent agenda. Did you want to just take a minute to talk about that?
So I had the audit committee met with potential external auditors. And thank you to Danelle for organizing that and helping us to think about what questions we wanted to ask them. And thank you to the committee members who, you know, it was a, it was a lengthy evening because we spent a lot of time with both of them and we were able to make a decision and which is in 1502 tonight. So we're happy to be recommending our external auditor who will be with us for the next five years. Yeah. Five years. So that's on the consent agenda this evening. And again, thank you to Danelle and to our committee for really helping us to really spend some time and, and ask thoughtful questions and have a good discussion about what the best direction would go for that. And just to kind of piggyback off that, five years. So we put out a request for a proposal for a five-year timeframe, but that does not commit us to the five years. So after a year, if, we can always go back out and seek a different audit firm.
Terrific. Great. Thank you so much. Let's see. Finance committee. Danelle, do you mind just updating us? Has finance met?
We have not met since the last update. Our meeting is Monday, April.
Probably the 17th, 25th.
Yes. So that will be our next meeting and we will continue to look at the charge.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, parent council, Ilana, has parent council met?
We met at the middle school in person last Friday.
Wonderful. That's great.
I'm trying to think of what the, the parent questions, we sort of, I can't even, I, they were sort of asking for some updates on what was happening at Increase Miller and I think tonight provided more of those answers. And there was a little discussion, of course, about COVID. But it was, it was sort of, it was a lot of, I feel like the majority was kind of updates in the meeting.
Great. Thank you. No new questions for us to be thinking about tonight or anything, it sounds like. Okay. And sustainability met, I think, twice. We had the opportunity to really take a deep dive into the most recent Cameron Cole report, which is, I guess, an audit essentially of our greenhouse gas emissions and to ask some questions of Cameron Cole and to improve on the report. And then really to celebrate what is very good news with respect to our school district's ability to meet some targets that have been set by New York State through the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, the CLCPA that became law in July 2019. So essentially, we're being asked to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 40% by 2030 and no less than 85% by 2050 from our 1990 levels. And Cottona Lewisboro is really uniquely in a great position to be aware and to perform these measurements because of some amazing work that's been ongoing since, I mean, at least since 2012 and actually even since prior to that. That was just like when this subcommittee came into existence. But, so we have excellent data and we are really on track to meet that first target, that 40% by 2030. Like definitely going to meet it. And now the conversation is really shifting to the very heavy lifting ahead, but this is not unique to Cottona Lewisboro. And again, we are in as good a position as any school district that I'm aware of in New York to, to achieve this goal. But the question is going to be how to get to that 85% by 2050. And to a certain extent, that conversation is informing some of the conversations that we're having on the facilities committee as well. That's probably, you know, the best overview I can provide of what's happening in sustainability. And Westchester Putnam County School Boards Association hosted a panel on Monday night for prospective school board members in the region. It was very well attended, a lot of people thinking about school board service. And I think that's it out of Westchester Putnam County School Board Association. Any other updates for committees? Okay. If not, let me just find where we are. I think this means we are at public comment. I'm not aware that we have any public comment tonight. And if we don't, then we can move on to the consent agenda. And we've already passed resolution 14.02. Would somebody like to move the rest of the consent agenda? Moved by Liz and perhaps seconded by Julia. And thank you for the comments related to the external auditor. Any further discussion or comment? If not, then we can vote. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Six, zero. Thank you. And this brings us to our opportunity to recognize some very generous gifts tonight. We're at 16.01 and it's my pleasure to move this resolution. If somebody would please second it. Thank you, Julia. Thank you. We have a donation from the KES PTO in the amount of $7,284.80 earmarked for a Gaga pit and the playing surface over at KES. Very exciting.
What's a Gaga pit?
What is a Gaga pit? Can I speak to this? Please, Julia would like to speak to this. Yes. We thought you'd never ask.
Gaga is a wonderful, it's a frame, basically. It's a wooden frame that allows students to go inside of it and it's an octagon shape and it's about 12 feet across, depending, you can do them different sizes. And you use a sort of a softish ball and you have to flap it with your hand and try to hit people below their knees. And so what's nice about it is really like, most kids are able to participate. It's, you know, if you, you're not allowed to throw it at people. And when Lewisboro Elementary School closed, the PTOs wanted to sort of bring a housewarming gift to the two schools that we went to. So we actually built the Gaga pits at Meadow Pond and Increase Miller several years ago. So I'm excited for Cottona to now have one as well. And it's just a really nice, fun, active thing that the kids can participate in and really like kids, smaller and, smaller and taller kids can all participate in it because it's all about hitting people below their knees. And even in sort of a range of height, that distance seems to stay somewhat similar. So it's a real leveling activity for kids. Yeah.
It's sort of like a mini dodgeball. It originated in Israel in like the seventies, became super popular.
Really?
And then about five, six years ago, it became very popular in the United States and here in Cottona Lewisboro and some of the other elementary schools do have Gaga pits. So it's really nice that now there's going to be one over at KES too. So we're really happy to hear this. Thank you very much to the KES PTO. And thank you to the Meadow Pond Faculty Association for a generous donation in the amount of $500, which will probably be earmarked for a John Jay Senior for the Meadow Pond Spirit Award, which is great. So if there's no further discussion, we can vote on this generous set of gifts. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. And that brings us to an opportunity for some board dialogue or discussion going on nine o'clock. We're doing really well with time. And turn the floor over to everybody. Any topics? Now we can make our way toward adjournment so that some of us can get over to the PTO fundraiser at Le Chateau. Okay. So looking ahead to future meetings, let's see, Tuesday, April 19th. So the board is next scheduled to meet on a Tuesday because it's the BOSI's annual budget vote and election and they've got, I think, a reserve that they're going to ask us to take a look at. And facilities is scheduled to meet Wednesday, 7:00 PM. We're back to meeting in person, so maybe here in the library and on Zoom maybe. Finance committee meeting 7:00 PM, Tuesday, April 26th.
It's Monday.
Sorry, Monday, the 25th. Okay. So finance meeting Monday, the 25th, 7:00 PM. And policy meeting on Friday, April 29th at 9:00 AM. Did I miss anything? Okay. Then would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Moved by Liz, seconded by Bill. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great spring recess.